Thirty first, the order please, roll call.
Daniel.
Here.
Larry.
Here.
Tim.
Here.
Misty. Mike.
Here.
Amber. Here.
Please stand for the pledge. Thirty first, the order please, roll call.
Daniel.
Here.
Larry.
Here.
Tim.
Here.
Misty. Mike.
Here.
Amber. Here.
Please stand for the pledge. Thirty first, the order please, roll call.
Daniel.
Here.
Larry.
Here.
Tim.
Here.
Misty. Mike.
Here.
Amber. Here.
Please stand for the pledge. Thirty first, the order please, roll call.
Daniel.
Here.
Larry.
Here.
Tim.
Here.
Misty. Mike.
Here.
Amber. Here. Oh.
Please stand for the pledge. Thirty first, the order please, roll call.
Daniel.
Here.
Larry.
Here.
Tim.
Here.
Misty. Mike.
Here.
Amber. Here.
Please stand for the pledge, order please, roll call. Thirty first, the order please, roll call.
Daniel.
Here.
Larry.
Here.
Tim.
Here.
Misty. Mike.
Here.
And here. Oh.
Please stand for the pledge, order please, roll call.
Daniel.
Here.
Larry.
Here.
Tim. Misty.
Order please, roll call.
Here.
And here. Oh.
There's one simple hearing.
Thirty first, the order please, roll call.
Daniel.
Okay, now I'm looking for approval of tonight's agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve. I'd like to make a motion to approve. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second, please.
I'll second that.
All right. Roll call.
Mike.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Amber. Yeah. Daniel. Yes. Whatever.
Yes.
All right, now I seek approval of the July sixth cow meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Daniel.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Amber. Yes.
Now, I welcome comments from the citizens concerning anything not on our agenda tonight. Seeing none. Now we'll go on to old business, which it's table till September's meeting, so on to new business. Discussion of a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the Arkansas Department of Parks, Heritage and Tourism. I believe probably Mark is gonna, gonna do, do that for us?
Yes, I'm preparing a fund grant through the state, Illinois, or not Arkansas Tourism. This is an actual fully funded grant. It's not a cost share one. As you see, it's up to a hundred thousand. We won't be needing a hundred thousand. These only come once every five years. So it can only apply for them once every five years. We're an opportunity to apply for this, and it's been selected for the horseshoe pits. And so in order for us to move forward and get this submitted by, I think it's the twenty-fourth of this month, I will need approval of the resolution by the council.
Do you possibly mean August? Because this month.
August, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Can you only use it for horseshoe pits?
You said this month.
Oh, this one, no.
Can you only use it for horseshoe pits? Okay.
Question?
I have a comment. So the horseshoe pits, the gentleman that originally brought that to us, he is paying some on that, correct?
That's correct.
Yes, so we have a gentleman that has actually asked for this, and he is gonna fund it, some of it with his own money. So just wanted to let you guys know that.
How many total pits? Six.
Six.
Thank you. Having all concrete edge around the walk be pretty easy to maintain.
I have an odd question, perhaps. In the resolution, paragraph three, it says, whereas the city understands the grantee and grantor will enter into a binding agreement which obligates both parties to policies and procedures contained within the outdoor recreation grant application guide. I haven't seen that. Like what, what are we looking at? What, what sorts of things are we obligated to?
We're not really obligated just to be able to submit. You know, you can actually do some in-kind services, which, you know, maybe the street guys can do some of the, you know, cutting of where it needs to be. But we haven't got that far specifically. You can actually use any kind, if you're actually gonna have an engineer, engineer this and design it, you can use that as part of the cost. But.
And that's, and that falls into that policies and procedures contained within the outdoor recreation guide piece?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm just guessing, but if you'd read further through the, the thing, it, I think it, it lists all the parameters. No, on, on that same paragraph.
Well, i- it's, it does say, including but not limited to. So I see what some of those are, but it's the things that I don't see.
Okay, got it. Understand.
Okay.
Well. Do we have any comments from the citizens? Okay, discussion? Oh wait.
I'm satisfied that Mark's gonna take care of the grant the way it needs to be taken care of. It sounds like it's not gonna take the full hundred thousand to horseshoe pits, so.
All right, looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve. Move to the next. Make a motion, move it to the next council meeting.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Mike.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Amber.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
All right. Next, we have a discussion of an ordinance to rezone property at fifteen thirty Kissinger Avenue from A one agriculture to R one residential. This is informational only. We won't need a resolution or anything per ordinance. Again, Mark, thank you.
The owners of this request are Robert and Mary McCallister. Property, as we mentioned, is fifteen thirty Kissinger Avenue. The applicant's requesting a rezone nine point six oh acres from agriculture to R one, which is one acre minimum size. Current zoning, as I mentioned, is agriculture. The future land use shows residential estates. We feel like this, this meets the desires of what is in that location since most of the area is actually surrounded by R one south of this. They wanna split off one of the partials for their, I believe their mother to build a house. And in order to do that, since it's roamed, zoned agriculture, they have to rezone the whole thing in order to be able to split off an acre piece of property since that's the minimum for R one. The planning commission unanimously approved this request.
I know that at, at the planning commission, Brad mentioned that the lot split doesn't conform due to agriculture, which you just said as well. I don't fully understand that. I know Josh and James both asked why it needs to be rezoned. I, the way I understand it, Mr. McCallister is deceased.
Ms. Ruth, it's supposed to be citizen comments first.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry.
Never mind. Pretend I don't live here.
Sorry.
That's okay.
So yes, any citizens have a comment? All right, now, seeing none. Did any of our aldermen have, Daniel?
Yeah. Amber?
I, I do. Are, is there any RE around this said property, or is it all R one?
Uh, I believe it's either agriculture or one. I don't believe there's any RE in that, around that surrounding area.
Okay.
They're still out in the woods there.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not entirely certain that's correct. I thought it was, uh, per our packet even that there was, uh, RE. The future land use category is RE.
Yeah, future land is RE. Excuse me, the north zone and the east zone is RE.
Okay. So it's conducive to go R one with.
Well, what conducive to go RE?
Right, that's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm questioning it. I'm not stating it. I would think it'd be more.
They're only talking about RE is a two acre lot, R one is a one acre lot. Those are larger lots than you would see in an R three, so. Or even R two is a happy lot. So.
May I make a comment?
If you, please.
I've been doing some research on this and on agriculture, per our city's zoning is you must have at least five acres to be agriculture. This is actually out of, out of ordinance right now because it is under. Oh, I'm sorry. No, it's not.
It's nine point six.
It's nine point six. I apologize. I, but I wanted to, I wanted you guys to know that because I just found that out. So if they are splitting it and it's going to be, how many, five and four and a half?
One and eight.
One acre.
Is that what?
They're not splitting.
Are, are they literally doing it as one and eight? Or are they doing it as nine one acre persons?
They're carving out one acre off of the nine point six. And the reason that they have, the reason for the rezoning is, is they have to rezone all the property first. Because that's what they want. They want R one. That's a one acre lot. But the rest of it will stay R one.
Yeah, and that's, that's where I struggle. James and Josh both brought this up at the planning commission meeting. And if, if we're rezoning all nine point six to R one, so we can split off one, what I'd personally rather see happen is we keep five in ag, take four point six and make it R one, or even better, I'd rather. But why?
Just can't do it. You have to.
Well, there's gotta be a reason why.
Because right now, it has to be, if you're gonna split a lot off, it's right now agriculture. And you can't split a one acre lot in agriculture. So you can't rezone, you can't split nine point six acre to one lot. You have to rezone it all and then split it all.
We, we can't do something like a variance, like we might in a, in another area?
Not on a zoning. I mean, that's an absolute, you know, I mean, this is, when you rezone something, it's an absolute.
Then personally, I, I, I know that north and east are RE, south and west are R two. I'd rather see it as an RE. I understand that Mr. McCallister is deceased and Mary McCallister is his widow and wants to build a home there. I get that, and I don't want them to not be able to do that. But I, you know, we, we have so little agricultural land left, and I'd like to preserve as much of that as we can. Or at least have these bigger lots, because the truth is, one day Mary McCallister's gonna pass away, and we're gonna have nine R one lots that we're going to be selling that aren't gonna be R two. They're not gonna be RE.
Well, they haven't even split them off. They're only splitting one acre off, and I don't think, if you talk to them, I don't believe that they're going to try to sell that.
I know they're not. But at some point, it's allowable, right? So again, I, I know we've had these discussions with commercial developers about, you know, certain things that they can and cannot do. And, and I, I, I understand it's their land, and I understand why they wanna do what they do. I'm not trying to stop that. But I just, I, I'd rather see some other solution if at all possible. So are there other solutions that are possible?
No, what they've requested.
I, I, right.
And it's passed, it's passed unanimously with the planning commission.
I understand.
From the, your.
I, I understand. But maybe they're only asking for this because it's the only way they think it can be done, and, and.
Legally, it's the only way they can get anything done.
It's the only way they can, per our zoning.
That's correct.
And, and we have no way to wave a magic wand and change any of that.
Yeah.
It seems like we might should have that opportunity, but I don't know. Okay, thanks. Appreciate it.
They, they couldn't rezone the whole thing, RE?
Well, I think what the, the issue is, is that, okay, this is, this is a lady who would like to live in a home. Does she wanna have mow an acre property, or does she wanna mow two acres of property? I mean, it's, it's just kinda what it is, and this is what they suggested they wanted to do, which was one acre.
And I mean, it doesn't sound like they have any plans other than the one house on the one acre.
My understanding is that's correct.
Any, any impact on the, uh, master street plan?
No.
In the rezone, okay.
Isn't this where the proposed Don Tyson will eventually go through?
It's just a little bit south of this, right?
It's just south of Kissinger. There's a kind of a road that goes up and gentleman goes over here, and this actually goes into the property. Any other question?
I just, I think it'd be better if we went and rezoned it to RE and split off
Yeah, I think.
two acres from there. And just, I mean, I think that's just a better plan.
Even if the whole thing was RE and we split off that one later.
How would that work if it's not even gonna be an equal? Uh, yeah, well, RE is that two, a minimum of two acre lots. I guess you could do different sizes. I guess you could do two, 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 three. Anyway, I have no problem with the one acre lots, but.
I agree. I just wanted to say that, um, per our zoning, and this is what they requested, and I feel like that we should honor what our planning commission has requested, and our planning commission has requested that this is, this be approved. That's just, I think we should trust our planning commission.
Well, I appreciate your point there, but we often don't agree with the planning commission about our manner of things. So I, I get that. I get that. I, I love Danny's idea of going to RE first and then splitting off one of those acres. And perhaps if, if we were able to present that to the.
This is the first rezone request, okay?
So we could do that.
So in theory, with the three lot splits, we could go RE and then split off the one acre and go R one on that one acre. Or why couldn't the, why couldn't the eight point six state agricultural and lot split to the one acre? If we're just talking about one acre and keeping the agricultural agricultural. I think Mc, the McCallisters are gonna have to maintain it, whether it's agricultural or it's R one.
Well, if we wanted, I mean, I don't know where everybody's at. I'm fine with breaking it off into one acre lots. Do we make a motion to push the, you know, push this to council meeting? How do we?
It's already going to council.
It's already going to council.
Yes, that's right. This is just.
We're just discussing it now, so.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Well, then I, we will send this on to council and, and vote accordingly. All right, next we have discussion of a bid tabulation for the Wildcat Creek water line improvement. Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir. Sure, I got that right on the screen up there. Cause I don't want to discuss the names of the bidders. The apparent low bidder produced a, what the engineer called an unbalanced bid, basically. And it has to do with rock excavation. If you look at the numbers there, you can see that they proposed two dollars, I believe it is, two dollars a cubic yard for rock excavation, which is way out of line with all the other bidders. So the recommendation of our engineer is to go with the next lowest bid, which will be the next lowest bid.
To your, to your right. Seven eighty-seven, six fifty.
Correct. And the reason I don't wanna discuss names is the, uh, the original low bidder has already notified us that they're going to try to sue us for not picking them. That's probably all I should say about that right now. So we can, we can send this to council, we could table it. Either way, it may be, it may be wise to table it with the pending litigation.
I will make a motion to table it.
I'll second that.
All right. Roll call.
Yes.
Sorry, Mike. Tim.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Amber. Yes. Daniel.
Yes.
Misty. Yes.
All right, next, a discussion of a resolution approving the water and wastewater impact fee study and adopt the capital improvement plans for the water and wastewater services. James, would you like to come back up here, please?
So I put on the, on your desk before the meeting, this legal size document. And what this is, is a comparison with the other cities in our area relating to tap fees, impact fees, water impact fees, sewer impact fees, and sewer taps. Tawny Town is at the bottom of the list there, and then the highlighted numbers below that are the average of each segment. And for the, for this comparison, I used the fifteen percent of the maximum allowed by the, by the Duncan study.
By the Duncan study. There, I received not that resolution, but the, the ordinance on Friday. Um, Justin is out of town and I really need to get some clarification for myself on the, uh, the ordinance. So I don't know if you want to push that to city council. Or if we want to go ahead and table this until next Cal, so we can have Justin here to. Explain some of the, the legal aspects of that, plus some other things that, uh, I want to address.
Can I ask, uh, what clarification in the ordinance you were looking for?
There was a few.
Few of them, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, um, I really, I'm, I'm not comfortable with it, uh, at this point. So I, you know, I would suggest we table it and.
Your suggestion, I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion to table.
Hold on just one second. We're, we're tabling the, uh, this resolution.
The ordinance. Now you can, you can go ahead and approve the resolution because this is just to accept or approve the, um, the fee study.
Okay, but there's. Seems like we kind of jumped ahead of ourselves.
Okay, we're.
Went to the ordinance. We're, we're, we're tabling the ordinance. Just want to make a hundred percent sure I see the.
We discussed the resolution, but we're going to further discuss it and then we're going to table the, the ordinance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So is there any more discussion on the resolution, which he is not comfortable discussing right now?
No, the resolution, I'm sorry, the resolution I'm comfortable with. It's, it's, it's the ordinance, but the resolution is just to adopt the fee study.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so, so we are on eight.
D.
D.
Okay, this is the one that is good.
That I will withdraw that table. I don't want to table AD.
Okay.
At least not yet.
I confused you.
Didn't take much.
James, I have a question about this impact fee study.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, it, it does go in a little bit with, um. With, with this legal sheet that you gave us. In this document, uh, it says for a new city utility customer, this is under executive summary, page one. Right under fee summary. It is the last sentence in that paragraph under fee summary. For a new city utility customer who uses the smallest meter size. And both services, the total utility impact fee is thirteen thousand, six hundred and five dollars. Uh, talk to me like I'm in kindergarten. What does that mean?
That is the.
Lot of money.
That is the maximum amount we can charge.
That's the maximum amount we can charge. But. Okay, that's the max we can charge. Why?
Because that is the maximum impact to the city.
Okay, so it costs the city thirteen thousand, six hundred and five dollars? Is that?
No. No, it does not.
Okay.
If you read on the next page, it, it, it discusses the, that maximum fee and phase in increases.
So when you say that the impact on the city. I don't understand that. I don't understand how that's the impact on the city. Uh, walk me through that.
The, the, the maximum amount?
Sure.
That is based on, uh. Our future projects as well as the increases we're going to receive in the future from. NACA plant and also from the, uh, two ton water plant. So we're not seeing that total at this point. But we will see over time. Um, and I'd have to look and see. How many years that, that he was, um. Um, trying to, to figure out there. I don't remember offhand.
Okay.
You know, in the study itself.
Maybe I, I do understand that is an impact. On the city over the course of time per utility customer. Who uses the smallest meter size and both services. The, it costs the city, whether it's over the course of time or however, it costs the city. Thirteen thousand, six hundred and five dollars every time we bring on a new. Customer, build a new house, have a new customer.
Not currently.
Not currently, but based on this.
Time.
Study.
Yeah.
Over the course of time, it will cost us that. So it may not cost us that when a new house is built today. But that house over the course of time is still going to cost us thirteen thousand, six hundred and five dollars.
Hmm. Not necessarily. I mean, the impact is at the time of construction. And at this point in time, our, our, our debt and our, uh. Future projects are not fully developed.
But as we bring on that new house that's built today. And the one built tomorrow and a month from now and a year from now and five years from now. Ultimately, all those houses together means we need to build another water tower. We need to improve our lines, right?
True.
Ultimately, the impact of a household per this study, if I've read it correctly. Is that for a new city utility customer who uses the smallest meter size and both services, the total utility impact fee is. Thirteen thousand, six hundred and five dollars. Okay, with that said, I don't know why we charge something like. One thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
That's the tap fee.
That's the tap fee.
Yeah, uh, on that sheet that you're looking at, the far left column are tap fees.
Right, I see the top says that, and then water impact.
Water impact fees and sewer impact fees.
Okay, so, so if somebody were to come in today with a two inch water tap. That's five thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars for that two inch tap. And another nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety one dollars in water impact fees. And another ten thousand, five hundred and seventeen in sewer impact fees. Is that what we charge? Per household coming in today?
Yes. Oh, no, not per household. You're talking about a two inch meter. That's going to be, uh, commercial customers.
Okay, okay, thank you. So a household is three quarter?
The three quarter inch meter, yes.
So, so a, a household then, one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, for the water tap. Nine eighty nine for the water impact and another thousand dollars for sewer. So I'm, I'm going to do just some rough math here. That's. Four grand, right? Uh, not even that. Uh, right, twenty seven hundred and then nine eighty nine, it's thirty seven hundred, uh, dollars. I rounded up, my grounded down, it's fine. Uh, so. I, i- if it costs us thirty seven hundred dollars, I'm sorry, if it costs us thirteen thousand, six hundred and five dollars and we charge thirty seven hundred dollars. Does that mean that we lose ten grand in the transaction?
Uh, no, it's not technically costing us the thirteen thousand dollars. That is a fee based upon it. Impact by, uh, 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 a calculation done by the Duncan and Associates.
Right, I.
And I, actually, I wanted to have him here, uh, or at least zoom in tonight, but he, uh, he wanted two thousand dollars just to zoom in.
So that's nice.
Um.
Um, but it might be worth it.
Well, I don't know.
Did you say no?
Not, it would not be worth it, but that's more than expert witnesses charge.
Well, that's, that's probably, so, that's probably true.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
There, this is pretty complicated and my understanding of it is, you know, that's, that may be. The very high end of what the impact is and that, that is projected out over, if I saw a time in here, I thought it may be in. Even twenty years out of, of. Uh, so we probably have a pretty good idea of what an actual cost is right now for these things, right?
For our future project?
Oh, no, no, for, for the actual impact today of. You know, I'm going to come to you and say, hey, I'm building a house. You know, what's it going to cost me to do this, assuming? That today we have no impact fee on me as a developer builder of my house. What's it going to cost me? And you guys would have an answer for me, I'm sure. To put in sewer and. I mean, it costs me. These numbers at the bottom here.
It's going to cost us the water tap fee and the sewer tap fee. Um, as far as the impact, no, we wouldn't have a number to, to give them or give you if you were building a house.
So impact is basically just a projection of what. Costs are going to be incurred over the life of the. Project, whatever it is, a house, a commercial building.
Um, no, it's not really cost incurred. It's the, uh, effect of that meter. Whether it be a three quarter, one inch or two inch, the effect of that meter on the total system.
We might be kind of saying the same thing in a different way, uh, uh, I think. Um, um. Give him a pause, I'll let somebody else.
But basically the water tap fee, you, you increased. What we, with the current charges, which I think is nine hundred or nine fifty, that's. What I paid, but you increased it because cost increased and then you added labor on top of it. So that's water tap.
That's correct.
Okay, so seventeen fifty is just what we really need to be charging to recoup. Our cost there.
Right, the labor and materials to install a meter.
And the impact fee is what the cost on, on what, what the house brings inputs. A load on our system.
Hmm.
Yeah.
And that's what Duncan has in their. Study, in their study.
Comparatively. You know. We're a little higher, which is fine. Um.
I mean, look at Centerton.
Do we have any idea, and I, I, I know we're not going to pay Duncan to do a, an impact fee study. On Elkin, Centerton, Gentry, Silas, Rogers, Fayetteville, et cetera. But do we have any idea what the impact is for them? I suspect the impact on a, a city like Bentonville is much smaller. But when we bring in a household. Yes, today it only costs us X dollars, but that's a little bit like saying, I'm going to go buy a new car. Without taking into account that I have to pay for gasoline and maintenance and tires and insurance. There are other costs. And so the ultimate cost according to this study. Is that, and it, 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 it says it in that sentence. That the, um. For a new city utility customer who uses the smallest meter size of those services, the total utility impact fee is thirteen thousand, six hundred and five dollars. So I know we're hesitant to say we have to charge thirteen thousand, six hundred and five dollars. But the truth is, every time we bring on a new utility customer. The impact to the city of Tony Town is thirteen thousand, six hundred and five dollars. It's what we hired Duncan and Associates to tell us. So for us to charge less than that. It may mean that today we're banking some money for the future. But we need that money in the future because the people that are on it today. Are going to make it work that much harder in the future as we continue to bring people on. So the system is going to continue to, to strain and struggle. As we bring more people on. And the idea is, of course, more people will come on. Again, I understand it's a big number and nobody wants to jump on it, but every time we build a new house, that's the impact.
It's not just a big number, it's an outrageous number. And there's a reason that no other city is doing that on this list.
Yeah, okay, and, and some of that may be some of what has come before where we are today. But here we sit, so. Maybe we say, well, it's a lost leader. Uh, just like a gas station will say, well, we charge less for gas. Perhaps than we pay for it or right at that mark because you're going to come in and buy a soda. I don't know, maybe we just get them in here, but there is an impact on our city. There's an impact on our utilities. There's an impact on our police. There's an impact on our fire. There's an impact on our streets. On our sewers. There are impacts and we have to decide what we're going to do with all that, but in this summary.
Also, those other impacts are coming.
I'm sorry?
Those other impacts are coming, street, police and fire.
Yeah. Yeah. So I, I mean, we don't look at this and go, oh, wow, what a great number. Uh.
Oh, and that's one reason I wanted to wait until we had the street numbers to do this, but. Um, because, you know, you're going to get to a point where no one's coming to Tony Town to develop or build.
Well, I, I understand that, that argument. You know, it's, it's interesting, um. A lot of the people that we know here grew up here. And that's awesome. I'm so thankful that you guys had an opportunity to grow up in Arkansas. I didn't. Uh, I spent thirty years in Phoenix. Nicole grew up in Phoenix and there. Uh, it's just very different. Uh, everything's very laid out. I'm not saying it's wonderful there. I'm saying it's not. Uh, we came here to get away from that. And when you look at the rural space, the agricultural space, the green space. That we have in a place like Tony Town, it is appealing to people. It's appealing to us. That's why we moved twelve hundred miles to be here. Uh, that's why people will come from other parts of metropolitan areas to come here. They'll come from California or, uh, God help us. Uh, or wherever to try to be in a place that's as beautiful and wonderful as it is here. And, and I know that you guys don't necessarily recognize all of that, those of you that grew up here. But we are a draw to people. And the right person who wants to be here is still going to want to be here no matter what that cost.
I don't know.
Well, I, I, I would. Uh, I, I understand exactly what you're saying, but you know, we, we just talked about a suit. You want to bring a lawsuit on us, you, you, you go slap the highest impact fees on at the maximum level and you will be sued. As soon as you do it, right here in this, uh, document, it also states the most, most important legal principle for. Impact fee methodology is related to the concept of level of service. Impact fees should not charge new development for a higher level of service than is provided to existing development. So we have to put our fees in line with what we have. Otherwise, you're, you're just setting yourself up to be chopped apart by lawyers.
Well, perhaps, but when Mr. Duncan of Duncan and Associates says this is the impact, there's a reason for that.
And why aren't other people charging those numbers? Because they could just as easily implement them as we could.
I don't know.
And I.
I, I, I don't know. And if I could ask Mr. Duncan, could I call him and ask him that question or is he going to charge me two thousand dollars? Yeah.
Yeah, phone calls are cheap, I'm sure.
Would you, would you pay a hundred bucks for me to talk to Mr. Duncan? Yeah, no, city budget, can we do that? No.
So we're needing to either table this or move this to city council, this resolution to accept this packet we're given tonight.
I think we have to pass that by city council.
Well, I, I will make a motion to accept the study, which I think is what this says, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so I, I don't mind at all making a motion to accept the study. What we do with it is a whole nother matter.
Do we need to make a motion to agree to let Tim make a hundred dollar phone call?
Yeah.
Wait, 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 we're putting the price tag on something. It could be free.
Well, wait.
His intel is right here at the bottom. We just call him and see if he answers and we don't have to offer up the hundred yet.
Okay, discussion of a resolution approving the water and wastewater impact. Okay. You made a motion. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All right. Roll call.
Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
All right, next discussion.
City council, I'm sorry.
Discussion of an ordinance to enact water and wastewater impact fees, and this is the one that you suggested we table.
Yes, sir.
I see, I would look for a motion.
I'll make a motion and move to table this.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Mike?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Right. Discussion of refinancing the point seven five cent sales tax. Mr. Clark, one more time.
I will introduce you to Kevin Fott with Stevens and he's going to talk to you about the refinance.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. I know some of y'all and some of you I don't, so. Um, we actually have, um, served as the city's bond manager for several years. Uh, we did the bonds last year in twenty twenty two. Uh, which was a one cent sales tax. Um, I visited with the mayor and staff, uh, including Justin back in March, I guess it was about possibility of. Maybe refinancing and then we revisited that about two weeks ago. Uh, after getting some numbers from James as to the size of his capital improvement program. It was about fourteen million or so. So to that end, we did the analysis and I think you all, mayor, they got copies of that, correct? I, I did.
I, I did bring, I, I brought some additional hard copies if anybody needs one tonight. Do you?
I probably can as well. Thank you. Oh yeah, we got this.
Thank you.
Tim, you have one, I just gave it to you. Yes. Yours is bound.
So if you want to, you can look on, maybe the easiest way to start would be just to give you some background. On page five. And that'll show you the outstanding debt as we, as it stands today, so. Two thousand seventeen bonds, um, we were the underwriter back then, that's the three quarter cent. And as you can see at that time, um, in October twenty-fifth was when we issued the debt, seven point eight million. Current outstanding balance is two million, eight, eight, five. So. These bonds, those bonds and what we're proposing, or at least the analysis we had done, you all can decide whether we move forward or not, but. These bonds, any excess or surplus sales tax collections not needed for debt service goes to pay off the debt early. Okay, so the scheduled, based on the scheduled maturity. Had we not redeemed any bonds with excess collections, we'd be at a balance of six point nine nine five million and we're at two point eight, eight, five million. So if you want to do that math, a little more than four point one million dollars has been redeemed. Based on the collections of the tax, the reason that has occurred is because since two thousand seventeen, that tax has grown by. Two point three, five times more than the original collections, okay? There was some what we call coverage, so I think it was at a one forty coverage, so one. A hundred and forty thousand dollars for every hundred thousand dollars in debt service, that was already built in, so we already had that. Excess growth already built in when we sold the tax or sold the bonds. And then the tax has grown by, again, by two point three times more than, uh, we were originally collecting. Originally, we were collecting about five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, um, per three quarter cent and now the three quarter cent is about one point three, five, seven. So that tells you how much it's grown. Does that make sense? Um, and then the two thousand twenty-two A and D bonds, again, we sold last year. Uh, we're not really talking about those, um, at this point. You'll notice the optional redemption date on the seventeen bonds, two, one of twenty-three. So that means that we can refund these bonds or refinance the two thousand seventeen bonds without penalty, okay? The other bonds you can see had a five-year optional redemption date, so we couldn't do anything with those until twenty twenty-seven. Without being taxable bonds, which is carries a higher interest rate than these bonds would, that we're talking about, which we tax exempt. Does that make sense? Okay. So if you'll flip on over to page six, you can see our analysis and, and obviously there's a big asterisk there. Um, any change in interest rates, um, will necessitate a, a revision of this analysis, so this, this is about a week and a half old. However, we hadn't had a lot of movement in rates since then, the Fed did meet last week and raised. Uh, interest rates by a quarter point, however, we didn't see much impact, um, on the, in the bond market. A lot of times those interest rate hikes are already kind of built in, so the market sees them coming, so oftentimes you don't see a big jump from that. That doesn't mean that we couldn't though, I just want to make sure that everybody is clear about that, but based on our analysis. Um, based on current collections and the thirty-year maturity, we can generate almost fourteen point five million in construction funds. So that kind of gets everything, I think, James, on your list. Uh, assuming that's what you all want to do.
So what rate was your analysis based on Mr. Fought, was that five point zero eight percent?
Uh, our. Our interest rate was about. Four point one, three haul in.
So we're not doing Fed funds rate, we're doing what?
Just bond interest rate, so these would be tax exempt bond rates, so.
Because you're tax exempt, okay.
And again, because these bonds are going to redeem with these surplus collections, you're going to see a better interest rate than you would normally on, say. Just a straight thirty-year maturity, we're counting, you can see in the analysis that these are going to pay off ten years early. And that's assuming no growth, okay?
Now, wouldn't it be better if we waited until rates came back down again?
Well, I mean, you could, now, based on the, now, based on the schedule that I have here, we're not talking about selling bonds until January anyway. So you're talking three months down the road plus, so, you know, rates could be better off by then. Uh, for sure, um, you have to weigh cost of, what cost of these projects are going to be if you wait.
But what, but we have to pay it off when? Well, we start issuing new bonds in January, we're, we're paying off the old bonds, so we're doing, we're doing a switch.
Correct.
We're paying off one, we're buying another.
Correct.
And there's going to be a spread.
Yes, um, let me see, I can tell you what the spread was on the old one, I should have it. Two se- two thousand seventeen bonds, what's outstanding average coupon is three point four, two percent. Now, if you want to look at average coupon to average coupon, we're three, nine, four versus. Three point four, two, five.
Yeah, but that, that half a percent can make a pretty big difference depending on how much money we're talking about.
Sure, it's, and it's a shorter, certainly, certainly a shorter maturity hence the, the lower interest rate based on what's left outstanding, so. But you're correct, um, and you know, you can always do that, you can wait and hope rates come down. And we don't, I don't have a crystal ball, I mean, if I did, I probably wouldn't be working for eleven, I wish I did, but.
Mine's, mine's out of order.
So, um, I honestly, in my opinion, I thought we would start seeing some interest rate drops by about this time. Um, the economy, as you know, you know, the only. The main tool the Fed has to try to slow this thing down is by raising interest rates to reduce the money supply. So I don't think that's happened as quickly as they thought it would. You know, I really, and, and I think what we're, before we're going to start seeing some interest rate drops, we're going to have to be in a full-blown recession. I don't know when that's going to happen, if it's going to happen. You know, at some point, our, our research person told me back at the first of the year, hence my reasoning. That we'd probably be in a pretty good recession by about now or not.
Well, I think I said the same thing from this, from this day.
Yep, so I mean.
Between now and the end of the year.
Yep, so I do think things will slow, I think we will see some, some drop towards the end of the year, but. I can't guarantee that for sure. You know, one of the reasons, or at least one of the things that we talked about with, with the mayor and the staff is. The state legislature changed when you can have special elections, so from here on out, it's twice a year. It was four times a year, it used to be you could do it whenever. Um, that, then it was four times a year, now next year's twice a year. And one of the things that I think makes sense is for you all to decide whether you agree with me or not. That if, if you're in a point where you want to do this, or you think you're in a, in a timeframe that it's. Kind of getting close, I'd do it this year rather than wait. Um, because you're going to be in a presidential election next year and I don't think that's a good time to ask voters for something like this. You can always approve if you want to do that and you agree with my rationale, you can always have your vote in, um, August, or excuse me, November. Um, and you can sit and wait, and once the voters authorize it, you don't have to go to the, do the, the bonds right away. Now, I'm showing in my schedule, you do it in January, which is in here, but you don't have to do that, you can wait and see if rates. Improve and you could try to time it as best you can. If that helps.
If it's, if it's all about dollars and cents, then show me that the dollars make sense.
Okay.
So if we refinance it. What do we get to put in our pocket?
Well, based on what you're seeing here on, under option one on page six, about fourteen point four, seven million. In construction funds.
But I, I do want to reiterate, anything that goes to be voted on has to be earmarked for that specific thing.
Correct.
So if we don't know exactly what the list of priorities are or what. Just like la- you know, last time on the ballot, we said this amount is going to be allocated for this, this and this, we don't know what that is. Yet. So we're in the middle of, um, getting our ten-year capital plan together.
I heard of James talking about that.
Okay, um, so we're in the middle of getting our ten-year capital plan together and I want. I would like to get the ten-year capital plan together. And I've told, I think I've told everybody this, I want to get the tenure plan together so we can prioritize and see exactly what the city needs.
I think that's wise.
And at the, uh, tenure meeting, we talked about the first two, uh, uh, items that water and sewer needs is. One's a water tower, the other's a gravity line. Um, north on one twelve, um, those two projects are about fourteen million dollars. So let's, uh, if we go to the voters, those will be the two items that we put on the.
So.
And so no other department would get any money.
No ladder trucks.
Mr. Fought. Imagine we hit that recession, we hit it hard, which by the way, I think is a possibility. And, uh, and we get two quarter point drops, or we get a half point drop. And we're down fifty basis points on this thing. How much more does that put in our pocket?
Haven't run the analysis, I can do that.
Ballpark?
I'd just be guessing at this point.
Five million?
Possibly, I mean, I can certainly look at that if you all want to and we can run some, some analysis so you can see that. Your ballot and the mayor's correct, so if you all, some of you who are on the council, uh, some of you may, may or may not know this, but. We would have to set a maximum principal amount for each project. We would have to vote on each project too, so project being a broad term, so water would be a project, wastewater would be a project. If you had fire.
Streets.
Streets, streets, fire, police, all those things are different projects and the voters have to approve each project, so they're going to approve the, the. Reauthorization of the tax and they're going to have to prove each project and they can. Approve or deny any or all of them, now the tax has to pass, but after that. I mean, I, it doesn't happen very often, but I've had some times where some things pass, some things don't. So say you had a twenty million dollar bond issue and, you know. Seven of it was water and eight of it was wastewater and only the wastewater passed, where you'd only issue the eight million.
Right.
If the tax passed.
And we rarely hear the benefits of recession. Let me give you a couple. Uh, if we go into a recession, which by the way, just about everybody still believes is going to happen. Uh, it's, at least since I've been in the industry in the last twenty-some years, it's, it's the, the most anticipated recession since I've been a financial advisor. Um, one of those benefits is that interest rates will go down. And when interest rates go down, we're going to get more money in our pocket when we finally refinance this thing. Another benefit is that the cost of goods and services is going to go down, which means that our money will go further. So I appreciate the effort you put into it and it, it, it's important that we look at it. But I just don't know that I feel comfortable with the timing.
And another thing is when we get the impact plea, fees implemented, that also will be going toward. The other things and we may not need the full amount just in one.
And, and I do understand we need that stuff. But the, if, if we can make our money go further. That matters.
So, um, next election, May?
March next year.
March.
And you have March or November, I would never recommend you do it in November. If you want to do it next, if you don't want to do it this year and you want to do it next year, I'd do it in March.
So election in March, when does the decision have to be made and voted?
Seventy days in advance of that.
So seventy days before it goes to the citizens.
So you're talking what?
Sometime in.
Sometime in January, I didn't count, but early January. But I, I, I wouldn't, if you're not going to do it, if you're not ready by March, then I'd do it in twenty-five. Because I just don't think that's a good time to be asking, the voters are mad anyway when they go to, particularly during a presidential election. Now, I know, and the one good thing you have going for you is this is not an increase, this is just a reauthorization of the existing tax, so it's a pretty good story to tell. Hey, we've, you know, this tax has grown, we've done these projects with, uh, with, with the existing tax and now. We can do additional things that we need to do in the city, so I mean, it's an e- I don't know about an easy sale, but it's ea- certainly easier than going to the voter and say, hey, we need another three. Quarter cent sales tax. So.
Did I misunderstand you, the, the voters could approve and we don't have to. Do the bonds right away, we can wait and see.
You don't have to issue them right away, we have done this in the past, um. This is something I would need to, as I say this out loud, I need to probably run by the bond attorney, but. For instance, in two thousand seven or eight, when we did the, the first Bentonville sales tax bond issues. Their tax was growing at such a rate that we actually. Asked voters to issue more than we, the tax would support at that time. With anticipation that the tax was growing at such a rate that we would issue what we could do and then we'd come back in two or three, four years and issue additional bonds. So that's something I need to run, we would want to run by the city attorney, or excuse me, bond attorneys, I don't, I don't like to do that very often, but we've done it. Um, typically, I want to see that the tax can, can support it. Anyway.
But, but you do have.
You, but.
You, you do have a timeline in which you do have to use the bond money, right?
Yeah, once you issue, you have to, you have to spend it within three years.
Okay.
So, again, but you don't have to, you don't have to issue right away, but once you do issue, the IRS requires it. I say, I usually tell my clients, spend all of it, but the, the rule is eighty-five percent, that's what the IRS requires. And the rationale for that is they don't want you issuing tax exempt debt, um, and not spending it, because they're, they're losing revenue in theory.
So the question to your last statement and explanation about what Bentonville did, it's one election. For a tax. For foreseeable growth, so you don't have to go to them a second time, they basically voted. Correct. Once and for all for something that we could do again in the future.
Yeah, and again, I want to make sure that the attorney agrees of what I'm saying to you, because we did that long ago, but it hasn't happened since.
Yeah.
Um, and I've had. Yeah, I haven't, and they're not, you know, Ryan Bowman's your bond attorney, he's not here, I don't want to speak for him. Um, because we've had those discussions in the past and I don't think they like that very much, but we've done it.
It's, it seems a little risky.
And, and we need to have the good story, right, so even if we can do it, it doesn't mean that we can. Sell it.
Correct.
In a way that makes sense to the public.
And I mean, you know, again, depending on timing, if you all wanted to have the election. And we could do some projections as to the growth of the tax, I mean, your tax. This year's weird, the mayor and I, we've had these conversations, I don't understand why your tax is flat, it's basically flat now, last two months you're up. To get you about where you were calendar year last year, where the rest of Northwest Arkansas is like twelve and thirteen percent growth, I don't. Something's off, like you've got stuff to me.
You mean, we're, we're stagnant?
You're pretty level.
Really?
So, and you're up, and you know, you're up pretty good clip in July and you're up pretty good clip in June. Um, to kind of get you level, you were actually down a little bit prior to the last couple of months. It almost feels like maybe something's not being reported correctly and it's rolling into spring now when it should come here, I mean, I don't know, it just seems odd to me.
So just, I just want to clarify something.
Yes, ma'am.
The seventy-five cents is not being raised, it's going to be staying the same, so we're not raising taxes.
Correct.
It's not being raised, it will just sustain, it would stay as it is now.
Correct.
So I just wanted to make.
Yes, ma'am, that's absolutely correct, that's what our analysis looked at.
But I really, I really think that we need to wait till our ten, tenure, um, plan is. So we can literally, we can prioritize and see what, and I know streets is going to be at the top.
Sure. Sure.
And I know our police department is probably going to be second because. They're already outgrowing themselves, we've already had to have something else, so that's just my opinion.
Sure, I think that's wise. And my, my, my thought process. Part of it, a big part of it is just timing of, of asking the voters, just because I think next year is not a good time, and if you're not ready. Again, by March, and I'd say put it off till twenty-five.
Yeah, that's probably wise.
Because I mean, I just wouldn't, there's, I don't think I'd want to compete. Again, I say that, but then I, of course, I'm talking myself into this, but because it's not a new tax, that's certainly helpful. But again, presidential election, conventional wisdom would say avoid that if you can. So.
If something doesn't pass, you, can you bring it back up again for another vote, maybe?
Sure. Because, yeah, the tax doesn't, the, the existing three quarter cent tax doesn't go away until the bonds are paid off. Um, so I mean, our, uh, we didn't do the projections, but I mean, it's got, again, two point eight, eight, five left on it. So I mean, you've got several years before it was going to drop off anyway, and several is a lot, I think, but. So.
It really isn't all how you market it. Somebody thinks that their taxes are going to be raised.
True. True.
So just, just a question about.
In Arkansas, you just, and I worked in city government and city of Springdale and, and Branson, Missouri and Arkansas, you. The only way you can pay for things was with, is with sales taxes. You just don't get enough property taxes to, to pay for anything, so. And the voters, particularly in Northwest Arkansas, have been good to authorize. I don't think I've had one, and I've worked almost every city up here, have one fail. Not here, I had like one in the twenty years I've done doing this, nineteen, I guess. Um, so, and you know, last Springdale had. Five questions we did earlier this year and, and passed by like eighty percent, like every question. So I mean, voters are, I think, recognize the growth in this area and that, that's. The way to keep up with it is with the sales tax bonds and, you know, once it's in place, they're. Comfortable, I guess, and I'll comfortable is the right word, but you know, they're used to paying it, so.
But it does go away.
It does go away.
If we don't keep.
This particularly, there's two different statutes, but the one this statute is, has been authorized by the voters under. When the bonds pay off, the tax goes away.
So it's a little bit like refinancing the house and taking money out, right?
That's exactly right. That's a good way, that's usually how I describe it, you're right. In this case, you're taking advantage of the tax has grown, it's, it's such a rate that your other bonds are paying off so quickly, you can issue additional debt. So when you're leveraging that tax and, and what it can do. And I'm happy to look, if you want me to, I mean, we can look at what rates look like if they drop by twenty-five or fifty or whatever basis points. And I'm happy to look at that and we can see.
I, I would appreciate that if my fellow council members agree with that thought.
I agree. I mean, it'd be, it'd be nice to know what we're looking at in the future, possibly.
I'll look at twenty-five basis points or a quarter percent or, and then fifty. And we can see what that looks like.
By the way, a basis point is a percentage of a.
Yeah, twenty-five basis points is a quarter percent.
Yeah.
Fifty basis points, half percent. So point zero one. Now forgive me, I, I start, I forget sometimes I'm talking in my language.
Well, you and I are kind of talking.
Language, which is kind of.
You've talked above my head long enough.
Thank you, Mister Fought, really appreciate it.
It sounds like we're, um, I'm going to make a motion to table this to a future council, uh, Cal meeting.
This was just a discussion anyway, was it not, or?
It was.
Was this going to?
No, just a discussion.
Yeah, that, I mean, it, James mentioned, if you think you do want to move forward this year. You know, the decision needs to be made probably by the end of August, about September fourth is about the deadline. My schedule that's in here, which is on page seven. Um, the bond attorney is like a little bit of, of leeway, so I'm saying, you know, by August twenty-ninth, you need to make a decision, so. And that means getting the ballot put together, working with the bond attorney and working with the city and the staff. So, you know, you all would have to approve an election ordinance, which would set out these maximum principal amounts and the projects. So, I mean, it's a quick turnaround.
Basically, we would have to approve this to city council and then it would have to be, uh, approved at city council. Because that would be our last chance for August.
Mm-hmm, at the very end of the month and for, for this year. Then after that, again, it could be January if you want to do it next year.
A part of this that kind of. Gets me scratching my head is, you know, we've talked about, you're saying we're, we're stagnant, you know, we, you, it looks stagnant, something's wrong. I don't know if anything is wrong. I mean, you look at, when I look at it, I look at residential building and. What we already have built and what we've approved is pretty much cut and. You know, getting their streets done, nothing else is coming out of the ground. Um, I know I've been to the planning, uh, the planning commission meeting and planning department has talked about, you know, projects that are coming. And we've got some that haven't broke ground and, uh, started. That are about to fall off on that report at the end of the, at the end of the planning commission, and so, you know. I don't, I, I think it makes sense that we're stagnant, you know, in that regard.
Yeah, I, and that's a good point, I mean, I think it seems like maybe, um, Patrick and I were talking about it, um. That maybe you've had such huge growth that maybe it's.
Boomed up and now it's coming.
But, and you all don't have this in front of you, but, but assuming my, my spreadsheet is correct here, so in. Twenty sixteen to seventeen, you went up eleven point six percent, eighteen, you went up seven, seventeen point seven, nine point two eight the next year. Twenty-four point seven five in twenty, twenty-one, you went up twen- almost twenty-seven percent, and then twenty-two, you went up twelve.
Right.
And you're averaging since last seven years fifteen point eight percent growth. So you're right, that may be exactly.
So if we hold off. If we hold off and we don't seize the opportunity and we lose, we might lose on that fourteen million. So it's, that's a big gamble. To play. Whether we go up or we go down, it's going to affect. I feel like I'm in Las Vegas.
Well, I, I don't mean to get too much in the weeds, but, you know, to Mister Burris's point, I mean, again, we could. If you wanted to do it this year or even March, I mean, we could. Put in some growth, again, assuming that the tax is going to grow and assuming we can issue a little more. And if it wouldn't support it, we wouldn't issue it. I think that's something that the attorneys will be okay with, but again, I want to make sure.
Right.
So.
Well, thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thanks. Uh, I might.
One more thing.
I might, one thing, sorry. So on the cover there is, uh, Mister Burris and I have talked in the past, if you all. Need to visit with me and you want to talk about this, because I know this is not something you do every day. Um, again, I was in city government and I sat on that other side and it's, sometimes it's a little daunting when someone's yelling numbers at you. But if you have a question and you want to talk to me, give me a shout, please, I'm happy to visit.
And I'll attest to that, because I've spoken to him a couple of times and he's always answered or called me back.
Uh, two thousand an hour, and that was the number last.
We get a discount.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you ever so much. All right. I guess now we have comments from our council members. Daniel.
I always go first, uh, thanks for coming out, other than that, I have no comment.
Misty.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out, um, please be safe this week at the great festival, it's going to be very hot, so please stay hydrated. Please go in the shade when you can, um, it's going to be a great time, um, we've got three thousand pounds of spaghetti waiting on everyone. So, but please be safe and, uh, use the, the police to help you across the street and so forth, but it's going to be a great week for our city. Thank you.
Larry's not going to like this, he's not going to like it at all, but, um. He, you know, there's something to be said for being neighborly and a couple of months ago, we had an issue at home and. Larry came to our rescue and refused to be paid for the job and said, uh, after pressing and pressing and pressing him. Um, he said, you know what, if you, if you want to pay me, just fill up the food bank, so, um, we. Did just that, but that's not on us, that's on Larry, because that's, that was his wish, so anyway, I just, I appreciate, um, people in our community, they're just willing to give. And I, I appreciate Larry a ton, so thank you, Larry, I'm embarrassing you, probably making you mad, but wanted to publicly make that statement, so, anyway. Yeah. Thank you.
Mister Will Stogeyak.
Uh, my head hurts from all these numbers, uh. Uh, yeah, thanks, the, the real good information to get, uh, we, a lot to think about, uh, between the impact fees and. And this new, well, continuation of the tax, which. Have you, have you noticed, if I, you don't mind, if I ask you a question, is there better? Uh, I don't know that there's too much in the general this November, as far as what else is on the ballot, but. It, would it be better to, to do it in a, in a non-November, because. Uh, you know, from my layman's perspective, I seem to, seem, it seems like you get better turnout from people who are, who are going to. Be in support of your cause.
Sure.
Uh, in kind of an off-season election, if you will.
I, I'm with you and I, and I, I don't disagree, I don't know what else is even coming in November, though.
There, there's always something in November, but, uh, anyway.
But typically, we would recommend to our clients to try to do a special election so that. It's off by itself and people will pay attention to it and get out and vote for it.
Okay.
And we typically see pretty good results, and again. I don't remember anything. At least that I've been involved in, I can't think of anything in Northwest Arkansas that's failed. And again, I do most of them up here.
Well, I think our last bond was like eighty-five fifteen, so.
Yeah.
You know, true.
Fayetteville a couple of years ago when we did that one, it was seventy-something, I think, percent and. Again, it's an existing tax, if it was a new tax, that's probably a different story, but.
Well, thank you, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, you weren't supposed to be asked questions, but that's all I've got, thanks everybody for coming out, I appreciate you being here.
Mister Burris. You've said way too much, but. I do want to thank everybody, uh, I mean, seldom the chairs is full, so. And as Mike said. Most of those numbers are somewhere above me and I hope I can gather them all in and figure them out, but, thanks, everybody.
I'm shorter than you, so they're way above me. Um, I just wanted to say, uh, we had some birthdays this past, uh, week or so. Want to say happy birthday to Brad's Burlock, his birthday was on Friday, Officer Low, his birthday was on Friday as well. Our very own Miss Arda Mania down there on the end, her birthday was Saturday. And today was Officer McCullough's birthday, so happy birthday to all those people, hope you had a, I hope you had a great birthday, Rhonda. Um, again, I hope you, uh, I hope you guys stay for the net, for the special meeting we have, uh, coming up next, it should not be too long, so thank you.
All right, uh, we have nothing for the attorney, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Yep.
Hi.
Now, we're, we'll take five for, uh. A cause and come back for a special meeting. Thank you again.
Why?
Do the peeping up for the great fest. Please let this law. All right, sir. All right, thanks, Ian.
Mr. Montez.
Why, there's two other, why am I saying?
Ms. Piazza, Ms. Piazza, your, your presence is requested up front, please.
You say so. I'm asking.
Are you doing it? Are you, are you? I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Special City Council, July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three meeting. Uh, roll call, please.
Daniel.
Here.
Larry.
Here.
Tim.
Here.
Misty.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
Amber.
Here.
We're gonna bypass the pledge of allegiance since we have already done that. Uh, need approval for the agenda, please.
I'm making a motion to approve the agenda.
A second. Okay, uh, do I have any roll call?
Mike.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Amber.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Misty.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, comments from citizens? No comments? Okay, old business, new business. Okay, approval of a resolution authorizing the purchase of a one twenty twenty-three Dodge Charger. Okay.
So essentially, we have the vehicles that we're looking to get rid of. Um, there's six of them. One of those vehicles came from our criminal investigation divisions. Uh, it's the silver unmarked Charger. So I'm looking to, and the, and the goal has been to trade in these vehicles towards one to replace that. So, um, essentially what I'm asking is, um, through the process of trying to find some vehicles and availability, it has been challenging and difficult. There's a place that I found out that I did not know exists. Um, it's Specialty Vehicle Source. They're in Kansas and they recently had two hundred new police package Tahos come in and sold all of those in five hours. Um, so it's a, essentially, there's another, if I was to have a check in their hand in seventy-two hours, I could get a vehicle from them. At hour seventy-four, it's being sold. Um, so I checked again locally and I found vehicles in Texas and Louisiana that are available for sale, but they have no interest in trade-ins. Um, so Superior is one that has interest in the trade-ins. Uh, we haven't negotiated price or discussed any of that. What my ask is, is I have, um, twenty thousand in fixed assets available to put towards this. Um, so I'm asking for the difference to go ahead and purchase this vehicle as it is available, um, and in the next city. Um, I've talked to James a little bit and Mark, um, there's possibility that some other departments may have interest in some of the vehicles that we have here. Um, and as well as looking at a Charger, be able to take some of the equipment off of these and repurpose onto another one as it's the same. It's a newer year model, but same body style, so could save some money on upfitting.
So when you say twenty thousand dollars, that's what you had budgeted for was twenty grand?
I have, and, and this is, that is extra, eh, not a, it was kind of waiting to see where we fell with it. Um, we had uh, things in fixed asset that we knew we were going to purchase and we had made all those purchases. And depending on trade-in values, this is what we were having remainder to put towards and with that.
So we're gonna get the trade-in value, plus we'll be able to reuse some of the equipment because we're going with the same kind and then.
The trade-in, we're, we're waiting on the trade-in for now and, and essentially I'm looking into seeing if it is more beneficial to do the trade-in for the value or if it is more beneficial to strip the police equipment off and then open it up for a silent bid. Um, I spoke with Prairie Grove's chief. They had two vehicles. They were Chevy Impalas, old police cars that they had retired. Not in very good shape and they got a lot more money out of them than what they're anticipating. So it's kind of to explore what other places are seeing, uh, the place in Kansas. Uh, not seeing any of the cars, just explaining your model's mileage and the equipment with them. The Chargers, he's anywhere from five thousand to six thousand. Um, and depending on, you know, laying eyes on them, that could change. So for that trade-in amount, I don't know if we can get more through a silent bid process or any of that. So my ask was for the difference from the twenty thousand to go ahead and secure this. Um, being that it's here and available, instead of putting it off and waiting till we sort that out and see what I can find at that point.
You're requesting seventeen thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Correct.
Which the mayor could give you because under a twenty thousand dollar cap, right?
And I believe looking at it as the total sell price.
Okay.
Would be over.
Um, I, I always want to give you and your guys everything you need, um, but I also want to be, um, cognizant of our budget. And, and so that's my only concern is, is where the budget is. It sounds like you may have found a way uh, to account for that difference, which is awesome. Uh, but I mean, can we get seventeen grand for that car?
The place in Kansas is, is five to six thousand. Um, he's, that's what he's been buying charges for.
Okay.
He said currently his issue, and if we were looking at doing a trade, he could work that out, but his issue is the resale of them. Um, there's not a lot of agencies that are coming to him to buy used police cars because he's getting available new vehicles. Um, Superior has interest in accepting these as trade-ins. Um, and then I have not spoken to them further on it, waiting to visit with James more and Mark if they have any interest in some of these to repurpose to their departments. Um, really, and, and the short notice on this is because there's one available there.
I totally understand.
So. That's, that's basically it. I don't know what will be available or where we would have to travel to.
So with the money that, um, he's asking for the seventeen thousand.
It would come back when.
It will come back whenever the other vehicles. Yes. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that. That's why.
What year is this Charger that we're talking about trading?
We have, we have six vehicles total. They're all for me.
One of them, and I know we're talking about re, not even trading at all and just buying this vehicle, but you're also.
I'm still talking about trading.
Right. So which vehicle are we looking at trading and what, how many, what year is it?
All of them. Uh, I'm looking, uh, we have six total. We have a two thousand sixteen Explorer and then Chargers ran from two thousand sixteen.
So you're weighing the, you're weighing the option to trade all six for the one?
Yes, but trying to figure out what the best option is.
Right.
With Prairie Grove, I mean, this, I've seen the vehicles that they did and I don't know that I would have given five hundred for.
And they got thirty-five hundred apiece from a private.
You're saying that the, the guy in Oklahoma.
In Kansas.
Kansas, that's five to six thousand.
Five to six thousand purchasing from us.
All part.
Yeah, um, depending on laying eyes on, um, so, and that's kind of where I, uh, having the ability to research that out a little bit more and see if it's more benefit to us to take the equipment off and sell that separate from the vehicles.
Right.
Still selling everything.
Oh, yeah.
Um, just doing, taking the time to do it. Um, there's still a process. Listing, they're listed on fixed assets. There's still a process that has to come before you all to approve removing them from and authorizing the sale. Um, so the reason for the meeting and, and essentially the rust is just because there's one in immediate area.
Right. Again, I think I'm misunderstanding, but you've got six vehicles that you're looking to get rid of.
Correct.
But you only want to buy one new one.
Correct.
Okay. So if we got thirty-five hundred dollars times six, that's twenty-one thousand bucks.
Correct. Yes. I mean, it, even if it's at that price, we should make the seventeen thousand, um, back some. Um, I just want to try to figure out the best deal. I've, I've talked to one place that gave me rough quotes of what he could do without seeing them. Um, Superior has interest in a trade-in. It doesn't have to be directly towards this vehicle up front. Um, it can be at a later time. They're willing to do that. Um, other than that, I, I've not been able to find one. The place in Kansas is five and a half hour drive from here. Um, and then I found somewhere around Dallas and then as far south as Shreveport, so, um, it's really just availability of being here.
I, you know, cars, I just always think they're a bad asset to invest in. Um, me personally, you know, I get a car and it's just, they just depreciate so quickly, so I have a philosophy of, I'm not gonna say it, but I've got a philosophy on if it's, if, if we're getting five thousand, six thousand dollars for it, I'd rather keep it. That's a nice way of saying what I would usually say. Um, so, you know, car purchases for me are hard to wrap my head around, but I understand you use them day in and day out and rack the miles on them. Um, and I, I understand the availability for sure. I'll tell you an instance. I drove, I flew to Milwaukee, picked up a box truck without a box and drove it twelve hours back. Um, just because the savings was so much.
Right.
And then I, I was able to acquisition, uh, mile, flying miles to make that trip to Milwaukee feasible. Um, so I get the, I get the, uh, it's here, it's in front of us. Let's jump on it while we got the opportunity and not have to go to Dallas or.
Right.
Somewhere else.
And two thousand eight hundred eighty bucks a car times six cars, that's seventeen thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars.
We don't use them in the fire department or James.
Mark was thinking about putting a ladder on one of them.
It's a good idea.
Well, I'd get our ISO.
Only be ten foot.
Hey, we're gonna get you that ladder carved or bust.
Maybe they've got a brush guard or a skid steer attachment we can get for James.
I don't think it's pre-chase our humor.
So I guess, uh,
I know that it's been really difficult for, uh, us to, any, anybody to be getting vehicles. I know that it's been incredibly hard. People have been waiting for
Sure.
years, actually. Um, I know that my husband is at Harps and merchandiser has been waiting three years for a car. Um, anyway, I, I, and I also know that it's extremely important that you guys have the best you can get because you're the ones that's out there chasing people and, and your lives are at stake. So I think that we should fit you in the best thing that we possibly can. So that's my two cents.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase.
I'll second that. Misty and I second that. Roll call, please.
Have other comments, Mike? I was just gonna say thanks for doing your due diligence on it and getting the numbers that, I mean, it made our decision, I think, pretty easy. So, thank you.
We ready?
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Misty.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Amber.
Yes.
Go buy that car. All right.
Good night and good luck.
We're all adjourned.
I have one comment. I'm gonna draw a resolution that Amber has to bring cookies to every.
Second.
Hey, what's that? What's the next cookie, um, request?
Peanut butter.
Man.
Oh, we've said macadamia nut.
Peanut butter or creamy?
Amber, tell Mrs. Burris what I did.
Hey, yes, my husband.
Yes.
Amber. Yes.
All adjourned. Meeting adjourned. We're all adjourned.
I have one comment. I'm gonna draw a resolution that Amber has to bring cookies to every.
Second.